Hey, good morning, sir. We do have a quorum. Commissioner Carpio is here in person with me. And I do not see Commissioner Feinstein yet. Commissioner Feinstein, are you with us? Okay, Mr. Chairman, the time is ten o'clock. We do have a quorum. We can begin if you'd like, or we could wait just a moment for Commissioner Feinstein. He did. He did tell me that he'd be here.
Okay, well, why don't we mosey down the path if we if we can. Mr. Carpio, welcome. It's good. Good to have you on board. I'm sorry I can't be able to shake your hand, but that'll happen soon.
Thank you, thank you. I'm excited to serve.
Yes, we're excited to have you. It's gonna be it's gonna be great. You're really gonna enjoy it, I think. We have things afoot and lots to talk about, so why don't we try and dig in a little bit? Let's take a look. Everyone should know I'm calling from France, actually. My wife and I are visiting our daughter in Barcelona and due to incredible technology, it's working so far. If I disappear, we have problems, but you'll know why. But let's soldier on. Item B is our new business. And it is pursuant to ARS sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine. The renewal license application submitted by Mr. Robert Arum on behalf of Top Rank Incorporated for twenty twenty five promoters license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Arum's application, please? Danny, you're muted.
Mr. Vella, we can't hear you.
My apologies, we were on mute. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, Top Rank, this is a renewal license and our financial investigator found the organization to be financially stable. We had we've had the pleasure of working with them in several events over the last couple of years, and they've done a great job. So I do recommend their approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. We have a lot of experience with Top Rank and Mr. Arum and all of it. I'm gonna say it's been good. It's been great. We've really enjoyed working with them, and I'm just excited that they are looking at jumping back into the fray with us. So this is a good one. Commissioner Feinstein, are you with us as yet?
I am, sir. I'm joined by Tom.
Very good, thank you. We also have Commissioner Carpio with us, so say hello to him, and we have a full quorum here. We also have a possible motion that should be at least enjoyed a possible commissioner. I don't know if you heard the
I did.
Notion of the
I did.
Okay, there were no for for blah, blah, and the chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight A, B, and E, five dash two two and five dash two two nine. I move that we renew the license application of Mr. Robert Arum on behalf of Top Rank Incorporated for a twenty twenty five promoter's license.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I am going to second that motion. All those commissioners in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, commissioners. Let's press on. Congratulations to Mr. Arm. It's always great to have them back, so really pleased that they're back in the mix. Item B two is pursuant to ARS sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine. The new license application submitted by Mr. Dewey Cooper on behalf of Team Combat League LLC for a twenty twenty five promoter's license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Cooper's application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this year, Team Combat League had approached us and inquired about putting in an application for a license. We've had the pleasure of meeting with them virtually to go over their format and their event style. They put on several events over the last few years they've been in business and all over, all over the country, really. And this year, they've added a new Phoenix team known as Team Fury. And so that's just a little bit of preliminary information. Our financial investigator found that Team Combat League is financially stable. And from our preliminary conversations with them and the review of their application, I do recommend their approval for a license. My recommendation would be that considering this is a brand new license, that for the first year, all payments made to fighters and officials inside the department are paid via certified funds or cash.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vella. I appreciate you vetting Mr. Cooper's application. Mr. Cooper, are you with us by chance?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Great, great. Thank you for joining us. Would you speak to this application a little bit about what you're doing and what you're hoping to do in Arizona?
Well, Team Combat League, we're a company that encompasses a team sport. Our goal is to make professional boxing like the NFL, the NBA, et cetera, by making it more of a team thing versus an individual thing. And our format, we feel, is the most exciting fight format in the world. So we know Phoenix has a great, well, Arizona in particular, but Phoenix especially has a great boxing history, a rich boxing history. So of course, we wanted to have a team there. Right now, we're already licensed in seven different states, Texas, California, Georgia, Florida, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, and the Foxwood Tribal Committee. So, you know, we're doing shows all over the nation, and we just know Arizona's a great place for boxing. I've been involved in several events there as a coach. I've trained fighters before in Arizona under Eddie Hearn. So I've actually kickboxed back in the days in Arizona, so we just understand how important the fight sports are in Arizona, and we feel we could really do some big things there. I've been doing martial arts since I was eight years old. I've had a long amateur career. I've fought professionally in kickboxing and boxing and mixed martial arts. I'm a Hall of Famer. I'm a lifer when it comes to pugilism. So that's why we came with this concept. We wanted to create something that was exciting, something that wasn't so demanding on the fighters fighting all these rounds that they do in boxing, and we wanted to really encompass a team spirit. As you know, team sports in America are huge, and to make a boxing team sport, we felt was a brilliant idea.
Agreed, and thank you. Thank you for getting Arizona involved. You're right. It's a great fight town, and I think you can do great things here. I like your format. I think it's fantastic and you do great things. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Cooper?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Feinstein. I'd just be curious if you could tell us a little bit about the last event that you put on, where it was, what the attendance was, and maybe a little bit about the outcome.
Okay, well, the very last event we did was called our Mega Brawl Finals. It was at the Commerce Casino in Los Angeles, California. It's basically our Super Bowl of Team Combat League. We had a long, you know, a ten-week season. Then we had the playoffs, and the finalists were Philadelphia, the Philadelphia team versus the Miami team. Our Mega Brawl is a very special event. Like I said, it's basically like the Super Bowl, so we have an all-star event. All the fighters that didn't make it to the finals, we comprised an all-star team, east and west. They open the night up and they do a a twenty-four-round fight, east versus west. Keep in mind, in case you don't know our format, it's a twenty-four-round competition between two cities. Every round is a unique, separate matchup, so you'll have your lightweights all the way to heavyweights going per round. After each round, it's scored just like normal boxing, ten-nine, ten-eight, ten-seven, et cetera. The team with the most points after twenty-four rounds wins the event. What's so unique about what we do? In normal boxing fights, after the fight's over, you stand around and wait for the decision. With our with our format, since it's a team competition, after each round, the guys who just, you know, competed will exit the ring. The two new opponents step into the ring, they're introduced, and they start fighting. All in that one-minute normal break you would have. And then we announce who won that previous round once that next round begins. So it's twenty-four rounds of uninterrupted action. So to answer your question, we had a great event. There was about I'd say about two thousand people, twenty-two hundred people at our last event in Los Angeles. Yeah, it was twenty-five hundred people at the last event. And it was a great event. It's on The Zone if you want to check it out. If you're a subscriber to The Zone app, you know, app, it's on there. You just go to the search bar, put in Team Combat League. You'll see our last three events on The Zone, and they were fantastic events. They they were ultimately exciting. The crowd were were ecstatic, and we had a really great, a great night. The Mega Brawl Finals proceeded too was incredible. If you go online and see it, I'm sure you would agree. Our format really encompasses energy, excitement, and you just cannot have a boring fight with with the Team Combat League format. Remember, you only have three minutes to impose your will and show your skill. So, you know, it is really a exciting, energetic, explosive format.
And what happens to the score if there's a knockout in that round?
Well, if, well, okay, the scoring, if you win the round, it's ten-nine, just like normal boxing or traditional boxing, I'll say. If there's one knockdown, it's a ten-eight round. If there's two knockdowns, the fight's automatically stopped, because remember, you only have that one round, and we're not here to see people get beaten to a bloody pope. So if you're knocked down in two rounds, the fight's actually automatically called off, and you will lose that round ten-seven.
And similarly, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a ten count, if there's a ten count, or the referee deems a TKO, then it would be a ten-seven, it would be a ten-seven round?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No other questions from you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, if the fight is stopped, it's ten-seven. If there's only one knockdown, it's ten-eight.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Commissioner Carpio, any thoughts or questions? Sorry.
Real fast, sorry to interrupt. The reason why we put that in, as you know, we don't want to see the Art Zero Gotti, a guy getting knocked down three, four times, getting up bloody and still trying to fight, because there is no next round. If there were a next round, then, of course, it would be on the commission and the referee to stop it or let it go on, et cetera. But since you only have that one round, if you get knocked down twice, we feel that's enough damage the fight should be stopped. So that was a safety protocol that we put in, me being a fighter and knowing, you know, when you don't have a chance to come back the next round and rally, there's no reason to continue to get beat.
Fair enough. Thanks, Mr. Cooper. Commissioner Carpio, any thoughts, questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Vella, any thoughts you'd like to add?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to reiterate that this, for this purposes of today's meeting, it's just a promoter license application that we're considering. Team Combat League will be putting in an event request soon for, I believe, May twenty-fourth. And so we verbally discussed that. No formal event request has been submitted yet. And then at the next commission meeting, I intend to go over any rule variations that may be imposed. Do follow a traditional boxing rule set, and so we can discuss that at the at the next meeting regarding their upcoming events and how those rule changes may, or what necessary rule changes there may be.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Vella. The chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. There is a hand raised. I believe it's a representative of Team Combat League.
Fair enough. Who's that?
Thank you, Executive Director Vella. My name is Mike Utola. I'm General Counsel for Team Combat League. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. First, our intention is to submit, and we will be submitting in timely fashion, an application for an event permit for May twenty-fourth at the Arizona Athletic Grounds in Mesa. We will be submitting an event permit application for June twenty-seventh at the Financial Theater in Phoenix. In addition, there is, this is a slight typo on the agenda. The entity ends with LLP. I don't believe that was one of the dropdown functions. I will subsequently put in an email once this call is over, the exact identity of the entity for the promotional license. And I also just wanted to supplement one thing. This year, Team Combat League was, you know, they had the privilege of broadcast deal the entire season, beginning April fourth, running through August thirty-first. It's going to be broadcast live on Merritt TV. It's a station that's owned by Dr. Phil and Steve Harvey, and they're going to be broadcasting the events in Arizona if we're afforded the privilege of a license, as well as all the other action from beginning to end. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you for clarification, Mike. The chair would be open to a motion. One would need to include the notion of certified funds.
Absolutely. Certified funds, anything in the, anything in your discretion, we want to be as results-oriented as possible.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Is there a motion by chance?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS five dash two two sevens, five dash two two eight, sections A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, I move that we approve the new license, promoter license application for Team Combat League LLP for a twenty twenty-five promoter's license.
Thank you, Commissioner. Contingent, please, on certified funds, if you would, if you don't mind.
Yes, and I would addend that motion by saying contingent on approved funds for the promotion of the events.
Perfect. We have a motion. All those in favors. And second, I will second it, or Commissioner Carpio, was it you? I'm sorry, I want to get this right.
I was gonna say, Commissioner Carpio seconds.
Ah, very good. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Cooper. We look forward to your future exploits.
Yes, and I named the Phoenix team the Phoenix Fury for one reason, because we know about the exciting fighters traditionally from Arizona, and we look forward to a very, very exciting season. Yes, on Merritt TV. It's gonna be awesome. Thank you so, so much.
Fantastic. Well, that's terrific. We look forward to it. Go get to work. Let's do this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, let's look at B three, which is also pursuant to ARS sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine. The new license application submitted by Mr. Chance Farrar on behalf of Yuma Fight League LLC for twenty twenty-five promoter's license. Mr. Vella, can you speak to this one, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I had the pleasure of speaking with Mr. Farrar on the telephone and going over their application. And Farrar has put on events in the past on, I think, Casino, Kishan Casino down in Yuma. And they've been successful. A lot of people have told me about the events, and they've been good, good events. But now, Mr. Farrar would like to work with the state to regulate some events down in Yuma. And I believe he'd like to do both MMA and boxing. And I think he'll do very well. Our financial investigator found that Yuma Fight League is financially stable, and I do recommend their approval for licensure on the same condition as we set forth for Team Combat League that for the first year, all payments are made via certified funds.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Mr. Farrar, are you with us?
Good morning. Yes, yes, sir.
Good morning. Would you like to kind of bring us up to speed on what you've been doing and what you're hoping to do?
Absolutely. For anyone who doesn't know me, my name is Chance Farrar. I'm born and raised in Yuma, Arizona. Husband, a father of five. I'm a combat sports enthusiast. I was an athlete myself many years ago. As far as our organization, Yuma Fight League is concerned, I have three partners, one of which is Kelvin Gastelum, who's a current UFC-rostered fighter. He's out of Yuma. Carlos Figueroa and Joshua Castellanos are my partners. We have thrown five small events on tribal, sovereign tribal land in California. Those were exhibition events, kind of starting the ball rolling. We, of course, want to have a very productive relationship with Arizona. We intend to have only fights in Arizona moving forward. Our goal is, of course, to provide that platform for aspiring athletes coming out of Yuma, hopefully. But of course, we understand that they come from all over, and we want to make sure that we run the most professional events possible, and we know that we can't do that without your support. So we're asking for it, and I do believe that if you give us the opportunity, we will, we will deliver.
Awesome. Thank you. We're glad you're here. Commissioners, thoughts, questions for Mr. Farrar?
This is Commissioner Carpio, and I just want to, full disclosure, I know Mr. Farrar, I know his wife. He does great things in Yuma, and, you know, he has his own kids who wrestle, and, you know, I just want to be full disclosure. I know Mr. Farrar. I can't, I'd like to abstain from the vote just because I know him, but I can speak volumes of his character and what he's doing in Yuma is amazing.
That's helpful, Commissioner. Thank you. And we'll, we'll make it a two-man vote if it comes to it. Commissioner Feinstein, thoughts for Mr. Farrar?
Yes, welcome, Mr. Farrar. Just curious about what type of event you plan to put on and and what your timeframe looks like on that event, and just in terms of all professional card, all MMA, number of fights you would hope to put on and where?
So we are looking at July. We are primarily an MMA organization. We have flirted with the idea of including boxing. I'm not sure exactly how that would roll out. Typically, with our past events, we've kind of done preliminary jujitsu, youth jujitsu and youth wrestling matches to kind of build that, you know, community or the family involvement. But as far as our amateur and professional cards, I'm almost positive they're going to be primarily, if not entirely, MMA. And I did throw out the June, end of June, July. As an organization, we would like to have three events by the end of this year, two of which would be indoor, June, July, and then, of course, we would look for August, September, then a big outdoor event at the casino, which kind of had, so there's, just for a quick understanding about the Kishans, is their casino is right on the border of Arizona and California. And so we've already kind of let them know that when we have a commission event in Arizona, that this will be a sanctioned event, that they've kind of shown some apprehension about having an actual sanctioned event on their, on their land. But, you know, through discussions, they understand that it really is not that big of a deal, and it's something that we, of course, are promoting for them to prove. And I think now that they have preliminary approved it, this would be a big outdoor venue and a big, a big event towards the end of the year, you know, probably late, late October, early November is the projection. I don't know if I answered all your questions, sir, but ultimately, MMA is what we're all about. We have kind of thrown in some very, you know, amateur boxing, but I think as this moves forward, we're going to be an MMA-focused organization.
Thank you, sir. No further questions from me, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Farrar, quick question. What indoor venues are you thinking about in June, July?
So we have the Civic Center as one of our primary options, but there's also the fairgrounds. They have a big, big convention, I guess, commercial building that we do believe that we could pack and do really well in. And just for a quick kind of, our past events have been very small. It's a seven hundred, you know, approximately seven fifty seating capacity in the, on the California event at the Kishan and Paradise Casino. It's a very small little venue. We've always been able to pack that, but we do believe that there's in Yuma proper, with Yuma athletes, I think that we would have no problems with a small, a few smaller events, again, June, July, indoors, and then moving to that big outdoor event at the end of the year. That's, that's kind of the tentative plan. We're kind of dialing that in before we make our formal request for those venues or events.
Sure, sure. No, I was just curious. It kept warm in Yuma in July, as you know. Oh, and I also wanted to say, we've done an awful lot of events hand in hand with various tribal entities in the state, so that's, that's wouldn't be new to us at all. So if something felt that way, it'd be perfect.
I hope so, sir.
Yes, thank you. At this point, the chair would be open to a motion if we have one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, sections A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, I move that we approve the new license application submitted by Mr. Chance Farrar on behalf of Yuma Fight League LLC for a twenty twenty-five promoter's license.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Have to be used, sir.
I abstain based on my relationship with Mr. Farrar.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, I'm in France right now. It's like seven-thirty at night, okay? So, you know, I run on fumes. But no, my phone's working, which is remarkable. I am going to second the motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You know, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Idalia has reminded me of the condition I recommended with the certified funds, sir, so if we could
Yes, can we re, can we rewind that, Commissioner, and throw certified funds in there? Sorry, and please don't apologize, Mr. Vella. Thanks for saying this.
Yeah, I, I don't even have the excuse that I'm in France, so I'll just redo my redo my motion. So, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, sections A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, I move that we approve the new license application submitted by Mr. Chance Farrar on behalf of Yuma Fight League LLC for a twenty twenty-five promoter's license contingent on secured funds to put on an event.
Beautifully done, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm gonna second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Farrar. Look forward to June, July, and coming events.
Thank you so much. Did not wait. Thank you.
Yes, yes. We're excited to have you on board. Let's press on and see our information report. C one is our event reports. The following events were conditionally approved by the executive director from February fifteenth to April first of two thousand twenty-five, pending the approval of a new or renewal twenty twenty-five promoter's license. The first was a request from Iron Boy Combat Sports LLC for approval of a boxing event to be held at Celebrity Theater in Phoenix, Arizona on Saturday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. The second was a request from Ringside Promotions LLC doing business as Rough Nation for approval of an MMA event to be held at Celebrity Theater in Phoenix, Arizona on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. The third is a request from United Fight League LLC for approval of an MMA event to be held at Westworld in Scottsdale, Arizona on Friday, May second, twenty twenty-five. And the fourth was a request from Rise Combat Sports LLC for approval of an MMA event to be held at the Rialto Theater in Tucson, Arizona on Saturday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Four more great events, Mr. Vella. The calendar's filling up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think we're gonna have a busy year ahead of us. We've been off to a little bit of a crawl in the beginning here, but things are seeming to pick up very quickly.
Indeed. Well, those are, those are great, and some great new promoters on board. Should be a great year, so much more to come. Item C two is our chance to welcome Commissioner. I, I'm gonna go Alex Carpio. I'm not quite sure how you want me to pronounce your, your, the name on your birth certificate, but Commissioner Carpio is nominated by Governor Hobbs on March seventh, twenty twenty-five to succeed Joe Penney. We welcome Mr. Carpio to the Arizona State Boxing and MMA Commission and look forward to his contributions. Mr. Carpio, how are you? It's great to have you on board.
Thank you. I'm doing well. I'm excited, and I'm excited, like I said, to serve and to learn. And I know I have big, big shoes to fill with Commissioner Pennington's departure.
That's, that's kind of you say, and yes, Joe Pennington was special, but you're really gonna enjoy this group. We have some great people in every position, and you picked a good time to come aboard. I think good things are happening, so welcome aboard. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Vella, let's look at item three, our global rule set status update, which tells me the initial review is close to being concluded by the department.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I believe we will have an update for the commission at the next meeting scheduled for April sixteenth.
Okay, great. Why don't we leave it at that? We have, you know, a final review coming shortly. Let's press on and look for that. Item D is call to the public. Is there anyone who'd like to talk to us, Mr. Vella?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I do not see, I apologize, I was waiting for hands to be raised. I do not see anyone acknowledging and wishing to be acknowledged this day.
Okay, no problem. That pushes us into E, call to the commission. Commission members or the executive director may introduce a summary of current events, ask questions, and/or make comments. ask questions and or make comments. Mr. Vella, anything you'd like to talk about?
Uh yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to uh briefly touch on uh a recent event we had this past weekend. Uh Premier Muay Thai did their first uh sanctioned event by the commission and um they did a fantastic job. They, I would just like to give them kudos uh for being their first event. There are a lot of moving parts. There are a lot, a lot of regulatory components to what we do. Um and so I, I try my best to always walk our new promoters through everything. And um they did a great job. They're just uh, and they, uh Joel Estvez uh was coming in from New York. So a lot of what he was doing, he, he managed all the logistics of his travels and all the fighters' travels. We had fighters from outside the country, two from Spain, uh another from, I don't remember where, but um long story short, they did a great job. We had four professional bouts. Um and three of them went to uh decision. One uh was an early stoppage. Um they had everything they needed there. It was a beautiful setup at the Arizona Athletic Grounds. They did it uh at the Pickleball Arena, um which was neat. It was outdoor, under a canopy and everything. Um but kudos to them and I look forward to their future events. Um I, we also had a Del Sol event this past weekend on the same day. I will not speak to that as I was not working that event as previously, recuse myself, but uh if one, uh Mr. Estrada, Assistant Director Estrada, or Idania is here, uh they'd like to touch on um the event, just for a short update. Idania?
Yeah, so yeah, we had about eight fights this weekend. Del Sol Boxing did a great job. Um they really did a, a really good job organizing the event at the American Royal Palace. Um it's their first event of the year. And so I just want to give them kudos as well as that they tried to submit everything on a timely matter, as well as all their medicals. Um they've really improved. Um but yeah.
All right. Thank you, Idania. Um and, and uh, Mr. Chairman, the other uh comments that I have is just uh the great work that everybody's doing. Um we've been going through a sunset review uh with the department and um that's going well. Uh our, our auditors are uh making sure that everything's just the way it should be and we appreciate that. And we also um have a lot of new, uh new promoters coming on board soon and, and new events that we'll be seeing in Arizona, so. Um I know that was long-winded, but it's all to say that things are looking very good and I'm appreciative of everybody's contributions.
Absolutely, and thank you to both of you. Varania, you're great at running a show by yourself, you know, Danny's job might be in jeopardy, huh? Um it's, that's great news. And regarding Muay Thai, that's fantastic. I've been uh uh really excited about getting Muay Thai up and running. I think Phoenix can be a great spot for the sport and so the more events, the better. Um one challenge I have is knowing when they're coming, Mr. Vella, maybe it's me, but uh uh keeping track of what events are coming when is still a challenge for me. I'd love to find a better way to go about it because it seems like Muay Thai sneaks up on me and I miss it on occasion, which I don't like having it happen, but that's me. Um Commissioners?
Uh we do have a tentative calendar I can share with you, an internal calendar, uh that has all the events uh currently anticipated for the year.
I think that'd be so helpful. If you, if you'd hit each commissioner with that, I think that'd really help us because it's kind of a more moving target. So it'd be nice to know where we stand right now. And I know it changes, but uh knowing where we stand right now is nice.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um Mr. Feinstein, any thoughts?
Uh just uh to say uh welcome to Commissioner Carpio. Um excited to have you on the team. I look forward to uh meeting you in person at uh one of these great events.
Thank you. Uh I look forward to meeting everyone else as well.
Yeah, I don't know if it works, Commissioner Carpio, but I'm gonna, once I get back stateside, I'm hoping to get down to the Celebrity Theater on April nineteenth for that Iron Boy card. If you can sneak out, I'll shake your hand at the very least.
Yes, I'd like to be at the weigh-in on Friday and also at that event on the nineteenth.
Oh, good, good, good. Well done. We'll uh, we'll make sure I'm there. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Um yes, uh there being nothing else to talk about, how about announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be held, sorry, my phone, will be held virtually by Google Meet at ten AM on Wednesday, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and is subject to change based on a quorum, which leads us to the possibility of adjournment. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your time. Uh great things to put and I look forward to seeing you soon. Take care now. Bye-bye.